Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. It is August 4th, and this is the time and place for the Grand Forks Jobs Development Authority Meeting for August 4th. Item 1.1 is roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Sowsky.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
President Sandy.
Here.
And Mayor Bochensky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 2.1 is Flex-Pace Loan Request for Northern Tier Seed.
Thank you Chairman Weigel, Members of the Authority. Northern Tier Seed here again with another Flex-Pace Loan Request. They're a locally-owned seed conditioning company based in Thompson. We participated on several occasions in the past with various pace and Flex-Pace Loans for their steady expansion. They're expanding again here with the addition of some storage as well as some conveyor system upgrades that will all in all increase their capacity, so it's all a great growth story down there. It is a just shy of $870,000 expansion project. That's going to be funded by an $850,000 loan from First State Bank on which we're being asked to buy down the interest with a request of the growth fund of just shy of $54,000. So the repayment terms, security, I won't go into detail, it's in the staff report, but with that, certainly happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Collin. We'll open the public hearing on item 2.1. Is anybody here to speak on item 2.1? Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing on item 2.1. We have a motion to approve by Sandy, second by Berg. Comment, Ms. Lunskey?
So they're not in the city of Grand Forks, but they're in Grand Forks County. Have we done other Flex-Pace Loans in county, not the city?
We have, yep. Yep. Growth Funds Service Area, I guess, if you were, would be, yeah, Grand Forks County generally for these type of programs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I move adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we are adjourned.
All right, we will keep moving on. We'll call the order, the Grand Forks City Council Meeting for Monday, August 4th. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Sowsky.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
President Sandy.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
All right, item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements, just two announcements today. First one, to give a congratulations, I don't see him here today, but Dale Bergman, oh, there he is, he did sneak in here. Dale Bergman has got his retirement coming up, or is retired now, 39 years he's been part of the city of Grand Forks, started as a mechanic and worked us all the way up, all the way up to City Transit Director, certainly been a part of a lot of growth, really, really a master at finding that grant money and just growing the transit for Grand Forks. So really just want to give a thank you, wish you the best of luck on whatever comes next, so we give a round of applause to Dale. I don't think I've seen Dale blush ever, so that was as close as it gets, so thank you Dale, much appreciated. And then the second announcement, just want to mention quickly, myself and a group including Andy Armakost, the President of UND, Mike Friedols, Tom Sawyer, our air consultants, Ryan Riesinger, and Keith Lund took a trip to the SkyWest Airline Headquarters in St. George, Utah. I mean, that was a little bit of an easier request, we're going to be at United on Thursday, again trying to bring in more flights, looking to get three daily flights to Denver on United, add some competition, drive the prices down here for air travel in Grand Forks, which I think is extremely high and certainly a weight on people who are trying to travel. But the meeting itself went really well, I think SkyWest is definitely on board, it's going to be getting, getting United to agree and then getting across the finish line on that. So just wanted to give a thank you to President Armakost, to Ryan Riesinger at the airport, to Keith Lund, the Mihen Aviation Group, Mr. Friedols, and Tom Sawyer for taking the time to get all the way down there to Utah. That's all I got for Mayor's Announcements, so move on to two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is 2025 Summer Intern Briefing.
Haley?
Good evening, Mayor and Members of City Council. My name is Haley Rosson and I serve as an HR Manager and also the Coordinator for our internship program. We are in our 10th year of this valuable partnership between the University of North Dakota and the city of Grand Forks. Through this 50/50 cost share, we are able to provide meaningful hands-on learning experiences for students and build the city's workforce. Thanks to your ongoing support, this program's become a key pipeline for recruitment for the city, and also we are proud to share that we've been able to hire 20 former interns as full-time employees for the city of Grand Forks. Tonight, each intern will give a short briefing on what they did this summer, and their mentor will also share the value that interns add to the city departments. Thank you.
All right, who's first? Did you guys draw straws for this? All right.
Hi, Mayor Bochensky and Members of City Council. I'm Noel Lund, and I'm a junior majoring in marketing at UND. I'm from Grand Forks, North Dakota. I'm currently interning with the Grand Forks Fire Department as a social media and marketing, marketing intern. I have had an amazing experience being able to capture all the great things that they do, including their company training, all the community events that are going on, and everything else that's going on. It's really been an amazing experience. I've also been able to create some content, being able to showcase all the great things that they do, and really, it's been amazing. I've gotten to meet all the great staff and all the firefighters, and this will truly be an experience that I'll never forget, and I'll be able to really continue my career from here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, Members of Council. Noah came to us as a marketing intern. He handles our social media, and he really captures some of our special events and community risk reduction, some of the training that we've been doing. That's kind of difficult for us to have time to take care of, so he's done a really nice job with that. In fact, he's worked with other departments such as the dispatch center and the police department to do some videos on what we do day-to-day. We've had a couple interns that have got permanent positions in other departments, but Noah, we're trying to keep in our department if we can convince him, but he hasn't quite said he'd do that yet, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and Members of the Council. I'm Andy Folsen from Grand Forks. I'm a junior at UND. This summer, I did some reviewing of the painting of the hydrants for the UPN neighborhood, near north neighborhood and Riverside. I did some Davis Bacon interviews for the senior center, the street sign inventory, got to look at some site plans, and scanned some conditional use permits and home sense loans, so some just good knowledge to know about the job, and got to learn a lot, good staff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Andy's been a great addition, he's really helped us out quite a bit. We have a small staff, but he's been able to certainly become familiar with all the different areas that we get into, so it's been a great addition, we're, we've been happy to have him, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. My name is Corby Kern, and I'm from Verndale, Minnesota. I'm a UND forensic science student with Criminal Justice Planner. I interned for the police department this year as a community service officer. It was a really fun summer. We did a lot of getting animals out the streets, getting them new homes and whatnot, but my personal favorite time was seeing the different career opportunities there is within the police department, and also just seeing the training days for all the special groups. That was probably my favorite thing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Grace. I am from Denver, Colorado, and I am a senior at UND, and I was a community service officer with Corby as well at the Grand Forks Police Department. And I think my favorite thing would have to be the relationships that I made throughout this internship so far, and how every day is just a little bit different. It was really, it was really a fun experience.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Cara Grumold. I'm from White Bear Lake, Minnesota. I'm currently studying criminal justice and forensic science. As a junior at UND, this summer I interned for the Grand Forks Police Department as an intelligence analyst. I got to create intel bulletins, help with stats and data, and got to tag along with detectives. My favorite thing that I got to do this summer was tag along to search warrants, but also this experience has really helped me determine what I want to do for my career.
Thank you, all three of you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So internships are a very valuable resource for us in the police department. We get an opportunity to meet great young people. We give them an exposure to the job, and they all did real police work. At least one of them was bit by a dog in the line of duty. They're seeing, they're seeing the job, and we get, we get good work out of them, they get exposure. We've gotten some great employees over the years, but minimum, they leave having a better understanding of the reality of our work, and that's always a win for us, so thank you for the support.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. It's been a great experience I've had. I'm Samuel Kruger. I've been working closely with the engineering department, born and raised in Grand Forks, North Dakota. Over my summer, I have spent the majority of my time working on stormwater modeling, as well as a good chunk of that going out to projects and looking at the project, the, just the improvements of everything and just seeing the process for all that, so it's been really good.
Mayor, Members of the Council. Like Sam said, he's been helping us a lot with stormwater modeling, and where we're really going to see that benefit is when we go to start designing our projects for next year that we'll be up in front of you getting approval for. He's put in a lot of the front-end work that we would otherwise have to do in our department, so it's going to be a real big value to us as we start doing projects in the future. So it's been a great experience for us, too.
Thank you, Sam.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is Alyssa Toller, and I am an economics major here at the University of North Dakota, and I have been the finance intern this summer. My main project has been working on the 2026 budget. At the beginning of my summer, I spent a lot of times meeting with each and every department and going over their needs and priorities for the 2026 budget. Using that information along with historical balances, we then were able to strategize the 2026 budget. And my most recent project is the Budget and Brief that's before you tonight. My favorite part has definitely been seeing all the impact that this budget can have on each and every resident in Grand Forks.
Good evening, Mayor, President Sandy, Members of Council. Mike Bossall, the Budget Manager in the Finance Department. Yeah, with, with the budget intern every summer, especially years like this with legislative changes that we have to pivot maybe, or sorry, that we have been looking at, or all the changes that Todd throws at us last minute, the intern always is just extremely helpful to be able to turn out presentation material, things like the Budget and Brief in front of you. So I want to thank you all for the continued support of the program, and Alyssa's been great this summer as well, so thank you, and thank you to Alyssa.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and Members of the Council. My name is Noel Martin, and I'm from Bismarck. I will be graduating from UND in December, pursuing a degree in political science and psychology, minoring legal studies, and getting a certificate in international relations and national security. My internship was mainly surrounding community facilitation and integration, so I worked a lot with new Americans and connecting them with essential resources, so finding housing, connecting them with essential healthcare resources, and, yeah, and so my favorite thing was definitely pairing the two. Government and immigration have both been really significant passions of mine, and so I'm really thankful for this opportunity to get more experience in those fields, and it has actually led me to pursue a career in immigration as an attorney, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm standing in for Hamzat today. He is Noel's direct supervisor, but I worked with Hamzat and Noel both on the NFI community integration, and Noel's been doing such a great job at collaborating, which we think will help her long-term with her legal career.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I am Joelle Fedig. I'm from Minot, North Dakota. I am currently pursuing my Master's of Public Health here at UND, and I'm specializing in health management and policy, and I had the opportunity to intern at the Public Health Department here in Grand Forks. I have been involved in internal policy development. I've gained experience sitting on emergency preparedness teams, learned about public health communications, and environmental health efforts. What I've enjoyed the most is a wide variety of opportunities, and I've been exposed to getting, to work alongside a team that is constantly striving to improve the health and well-being of the community, and so I thank you for investing in student development as I accept or appreciate this internship opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I'm Shaila Miller, Public Health Communication Strategist. As Joelle mentioned, she worked with our policy committee to review, revise, and update our department policies, and since she's able to dedicate her time and talents to that project, she's been able to accomplish a lot, and it's all really quality work, so we're very fortunate to have her. Thank you, Joelle, for your great work, and thank you all for the opportunity to work with her.
Did you just click this? Just this? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is Ray Buckles. I'm from here in Grand Forks. I'm a Fisheries and Wildlife Biology major that graduated this spring at UND. I interned as a wildlife mitigation technician at the Grand Forks Waste Water Treatment Plant. This summer, I reduced aircraft to avian air, sorry, aircraft to avian conflicts via mitigation that is conducted with audio and visual deterrence. I also learned how to further ID and survey avian species, maintain mitigation equipment, and conduct safe firearm handling. I also conducted an independent research project that I created a research question for, created my own tools for, and did the research for. And my favorite part of this internship was working with my coworkers and gaining new funds from it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. My name's Madison Britnell. I'm from Minot, North Dakota. I am going into my senior year here at UND, majoring in Fisheries and Wildlife Biology. I was also a wildlife mitigation intern at the Waste Water Treatment Plant this summer. Some of the things I did was also work with pyros, mitigating wildlife to reduce aircraft collision and bird strikes. One of my favorite things I did this summer was work on my own independent research project, but also being able to meet my coworkers.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I would just like to express my absolute gratitude for this internship program. It absolutely is essential for the jobs that we do out at the Waste Water Treatment Plant. We are out there before sunrise and after sunset six days a week, and so I personally cannot handle all of those hours myself, I don't know about you guys, but Madison had been out there before sunrise every single day. Ray had been out there past sunset every single day, keeping these airspaces clear for the Grand Forks Airport and for the rest of us out there. So I would just like to give a good, big round of applause for the rest of our interns. Thank you, everybody. This has been an amazing year. Thank you all.
All right, well, thank you. It's a great program, and just glad everyone got up and everybody did a great job, so thank you. And we are hiring, so get your applications in for full-time work, please. Never forget to plug that. All right, we're going to move on to item 3, Public Hearings and Second Readings of Ordinances. I did first just want to say, if anyone does have a citizen comment, get those in before we start item 4, because that's where the cutoff is. So if you had a card, or if you need to grab one, and you want to speak during citizen comments, make sure you, you do that here while we're doing item 3.
All right, 3.1 is a public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend city code for various updates due to legislative changes to century code.
All right, we'll open the public hearing for item 3.1. Anyone here to speak on item 3.1? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and open up the council. Motion to approve from President Sandy, second from Ms. Osowski. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
3.2, Public Hearing and Determination Protest on Request to Vacate Two Bikeway and Pedestrian Easements Located at Bethesda Circle, and there is a citizen comment attached to this agenda item.
Thank you. And with that, same procedure, we'll open the public hearing, item 3.2. Anybody here to speak on item 3.2? Please step right over here to the mic that's lit up.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and Members of the Council. I'm Jane Croker, and I live at 1010 Campbell Drive. As a resident of Grand Forks who bicycles and walks for transportation and recreation, I'm here to encourage you to maintain city control of all easements along the Cooley behind the townhomes on Bethesda. By doing so, you will preserve options for the future that will no longer exist if the easements are turned over to a small group of property owners. If you have not had a chance to walk that city easement, I hope you will do so, as you will discover a beautiful piece of our city that should continue to belong to the community as a whole instead of being turned over to a small group of private residents. I did not come by this point of view before visiting the area in question numerous times. I attended the neighborhood meeting about the Oxford development, and I spoke to friends who live in those condos and others who live nearby. Some people I spoke to would prefer to preserve the public's right to access to the area, as do I, but I understand that some people fear change and react negatively to new ideas. However, our experience with trail development and sidewalk development in Grand Forks and in cities across the state and nation should be reassuring. When trails and sidewalks go in, they are embraced by the community and few, if any, problems arise. In short, the fears behind the request to vacate the easements are unfounded. Thanks to the foresight of city leaders, I have a sidewalk in front of my home at 1010 Campbell Drive. It is well-used and highly valued by people of all ages, from children to adults walking to their dogs, to old people like me. In the 38 years I have lived in that location, I'm not aware of any issue arising because of that sidewalk. And by the way, my bedrooms in my home are closer to the sidewalk than any of the properties in question on Bethesda. And so I would just like to encourage you to think about the future, whether you're ready right now to think of a sidewalk or a trail in that area. As city leaders, it's your responsibility to think of the community as a whole and not to focus on a few people who are asking not to have something in their backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Comments on item 3.2, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Terry Dullum. I live at 2225 Bethesda Circle, and I'm a member of the Cottage's Association Board of Directors. And I would just very briefly like to tell you why we are requesting a vacation of the easement. It is primarily twofold, security and privacy. We just feel that the, the path, if it were further developed, is simply too close to our homes. In my case, my bedroom window is a little over five and a half yards from the path. At an earlier meeting, I was asked how many people on Bethesda Circle who live on Bethesda Circle support the idea of a vacation, and I wasn't able to give a very good answer at that time, but now I have a list of 19 people, we're 20 units, I have a list of 19 people who all support the vacation. I have not talked to anybody who doesn't, and so I can say, I think with some certainty, that virtually all of us support the idea of vacating this easement. Earlier at a meeting, the head of the Planning and Zoning Commission said that this path was started years ago as a mistake. His words, not mine. If it was a mistake that was started then, why would we want to finish a mistake now? If it was a mistake that was started then, why would we want to finish a mistake now? Finally, this is a, would be a public path for walkers and runners and dog walkers and all of that, but whatever happens, this is our backyard. For 20 of us, this is our backyard. It's private for us, and we would respectfully ask that you take into considerations our concern for security and privacy when you make your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on item 3.2? All right, we'll close the public hearing portion. Ms. Oselsky?
Yeah, so I'm looking at the map right now, and it is on page six. So we want to vacate the red portion, the orange portion, and the green portion, correct?
Correct.
And then, so my question is, is like, does this red portion go all the way out to 38th Street? Like, is, can they wa, is it a public use path to use from 38th down to, what is this, the Cooley, right?
Yeah, it would go across the Cooley.
Okay.
Sorry. It would go across the Cooley. Councilperson Oselsky.
Does it go all the way to 38th down to the Cooley?
There is a connecting path on the other side that would not be part of this request, because we have not worked with those homeowners at this time, but this is, I'll just use this as an example, that area D, there is a match on the other side, but this request is just from the homeowners on this side.
So are we just talking about area C currently?
It would be A, B, and C, and D, all four are the request.
Are under this?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so is there a way to get from D to C across the Cooley? Is there like a walking path or a bridge? Is there, are there bike paths anywhere along the Cooley? Is the big green, I mean, that's the Cooley, right?
So, yeah, here's the Cooley here. It's hard to see, but that's that vegetate, the vegetative piece through here. That's the Cooley within there. C and B are just Bethesda Circle to this green path that currently has.
So the green is a path?
Yeah, that is a gravel path currently.
A gravel path?
Correct.
Do, in any of our plans, do we plan on paving that gravel path?
That would have come in the future as it connected up with other pieces. As, at the current point, we do not have anything to connect to, to the north. It just connects, it starts at 24th here, and then essentially cul-de-sacs at the current time, because there was no development that happened to the north as of yet. That's still to come in the future.
Is there any place over by D and C that you can actually cross the Cooley?
B and C would just connect from Bethesda here, which is a private roadway, to that path. So these paths wouldn't go across the Cooley. This one wouldn't, and this one wouldn't. This would be the only one that would eventually mesh up and then go across over the Cooley.
Okay, but right now, from the red path, you cannot get to the green path?
There is no path here. It's just right away.
Oh, right away, okay.
On paper, and then same thing with C and B as well. Those are just on paper.
Oh, so there are no paths actually there?
There are no paths on either, on those. The only one that has anything on it is a gravel path currently on the green, which is that area A.
And we want to get rid of even A?
Correct. That's the request.
I mean, I guess the way that I'm looking at it, I don't disagree with C, B, and D, but I, I mean, we have walking paths and bike paths next to all other parts of our Cooley throughout town. I mean, U N D has a very nice bike path. I disagree with getting rid of A, but I don't mind getting rid of the other ones, because, I mean, one, they're already on, they're just on paper, and two, it looks like some of them like cut through, you know, residential properties, but I, is it, oh, what kind of path is it? Are motor vehicles allowed on that path, or what's allowed there?
I don't believe we allow motor vehicles on those paths, but they, it's bike, it's, it would be walking.
Okay.
You, it's gravel, so, you know, you're not gonna see inline skaters on that. But I think the concern where this is different than some of the other Cooley, from what I'd heard from, from the request, in this case, I'll say further to the east here, there's a English Cooley path, and through the university as well, there's a good-sized distance between where the existing single-family are, some of those residents, and the path. Through this area here, it does get very tight, and I think that's some of the concern that we've heard from, from the neighbors, is how close that starts to get. So there's patios on the backside of their homes, and it got a little close for what their preferences were, so that was why I think the request was made originally.
And I guess what was there first, the path or the homes?
We, the city required that path to go in as part of that development back 20 years ago.
So it was, so the path is part of the original development?
Correct. Correct.
I guess I'm not really in agreeance with vacating all of this. I disagree with it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Wargill, please. Vice President.
Can I ask Mr. Doolam a question, if he has an opportunity?
Yes.
Mr. Doolam, how long have you lived at your current residence?
I wish my wife were here. She would know. I believe it's 21 years.
Okay. In, in your 21 years living there, how many people do you see use this path? Because when I look at the path, it leads straight to private property. It goes into a field. There's nothing, like, I typically am gonna take a path to go somewhere. This path doesn't go anywhere, and you can still go west on 17th, or maybe it's not 17th, the 24th, and then still go north on 42nd or south on 42nd, if you're trying to get to 42nd. So my question is, how many people have you seen in your 21 years approximately use this and realize that they can't go anywhere?
Well, it's varied. Currently, we have, there's very little traffic on it because we have it signed as private property. But if you were to walk from 24th and take this path, you'd be walking approximately two blocks. I call it a path to nowhere. It ends nowhere. If, unless you were to turn around and go back exactly the way you came, in any direction, you would be on private property. We have seen some traffic at times. We've tried to keep it down with signage, but at the moment, it's, it's pretty quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Doolam. Mayor, I'm in support of vacating this. I think it's entirely too close to residences. I think when I was just measuring Google Maps, I've been out there, it is very close. It doesn't lead to anywhere right now. It hasn't led to anywhere in 20 years, and so based on the homeowners in that area wanting that, I'd make a motion that we approve this staff recommendation to vacate.
Can I get a motion approved from Vice President Wargill? Do we have a second? Got a second from Mr. Friedols. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Let me, I'll start with people who haven't spoken, then get back to Ms. Lunskey, please.
So you said Bethesda Road is a private road?
Correct.
So what makes, what roads, I thought all roads were public. Can you explain, like, why their road is private, or what?
Part of the original development piece, if I click on this, this is, this is, once they turn off a 40th here, this becomes a private road. So a lot, it's not unusual that a lot of townhomes are on private roads, and so typically, they're not built to, you know, they don't have curb and gutter, they don't have, you know, they may even be built with asphalt as opposed to our, our city standard, which is, you know, typically concrete. So that's not unusual as part of townhome developments. And in this case, I think this was originally set up, Valley 4,000 at the time, now they're Valley Senior Living, I believe, built this, and then this was kind of their second phase, was these townhome developments, that was, you know, kind of a, a community there that they would all be a part of. So the townhomes, and then eventually, somebody, if they wanted to, could eventually just move up to the, the next set. It's a little bit similar to what Edgewood's kind of done with some of their, have some townhomes around that Valley Senior Living, or their Senior Living portion. Perhaps their kids could live in a townhome next to where maybe their parent is living, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Veen?
Brian, obviously, this dead ends right now in the north end. Was there ever any intent that this would continue to the north? I mean, it's been there for 20 years, but there's no development, but that's now being planned for development, right?
It is being planned for development. Currently, we do not have that plan to go with a path along the, between the homes and the Cooley. We were actually gonna move the pedestrian traffic out to the front.
To the front.
Along the, and it was, this is, it's still, we've tabled it now, but there'd be homes along the Cooley as it goes to the north, and then it's a public street out front, and then we'd have sidewalks on both sides of that public street.
On, on the set, whatever the drive that is, is there sidewalks adjacent to that?
They do. It's, it's a little bit different setup, so I'll zoom in here real close. The sidewalk is essentially on the side of the, of the road.
So basically, you have a sidewalk in front and a bike path in the back?
Correct.
And they want to vacate the bike path?
Correct.
But there's still access north and south on, both on this street and, what is it, 38th on the other side of it?
38th on the other is public street as well.
Yeah. And you have, you have bike path. My question, is there any connection between 38th and the drive here that goes?
Over the Cooley?
Yep.
There's still some additional ones that are up to the north here. I think there's currently one here at 20th, and there might be some to the further north. We were, I think what you'll see in that future plan, we weren't looking to connect every one. Those bridges start to get very expensive. We talked about 20th, but I, that's still, that'll be part of that conversation, is part of Burkholtz.
From a pedestrian standpoint, you either have to do it at 24th or go all the way to 17th, then?
Correct, currently, correct.
Yeah. And so, wouldn't we need to have something in between there for people not to have to go 17th to 24th?
That, that would be where we're talking about 20th, which would be about halfway between. These ones, we didn't think, we thought that was a little too close to 24th to have a bridge across in this area here. It seems a little close to 24th to have that expense of a, of another path in this area, because we're just dealing with this area, you know, the request is here. We thought it was better to bring them back to 24th if they want to go around, and then maybe this 20th one is the halfway between there and 17th.
And on the east side, 20th easement exists, and nothing on the west side, because there's no new plat, is that right?
Correct. That, that recommendation will be on the plat as it comes forward to connect 20th.
And as I look at this, it's gravel right now. It looks like there's almost tracks in there. Is somebody driving? Are they walking, or what utilization currently is happening on that?
Utilization, I'm not sure. I think to Terry's point before, this wasn't very well-used, because essentially, they would, they would, if they came up here, you would end up in this area here, and then either you have to curl back around, kind of going across people's property here, and then coming back down if you wanted to, or you'd have to come up here and then return back in the same direction. So it's kind of a, it's a cul-de-sac right now, and those aren't necessarily real popular. But that is part of our build-out process. Just in this case, even as we continued to the north, we were looking at having it in front of the homes as opposed to behind the connection piece.
The road dead ends now, and there's a leg of the, of the Cooley that goes through there. Was that going to also extend across that Cooley in the future?
This, this property owner isn't part of either plat at this time, so we're kind of stuck. We will, we still have another piece to connect eventually.
So that piece would have to go in, but as you go further to the north, there will be a sidewalk there?
Correct, yeah. That public street comes to this point here. And so we would, once this develops, then we would, we would look at having connecting pieces. And we're not sure at this point, this is still a private sidewalk and private road, so the connection piece would have to go onto private sidewalk, so there, there, that is currently in place.
So no easement or anything for public access to that sidewalk?
Correct.
So the only public access is the one that's behind there?
Currently, correct. Otherwise, it's out to 42nd, I think, as, as was mentioned.
Yeah, otherwise, you go over there, but between 38th and, on either side of the?
On the west side of the Cooley, correct. It's all private.
You don't have anything that's public, it'll be just private?
Correct. If this was to go through, then, if that path was to be removed, that is correct.
Is there any other options to make sure we have public access that can go north on the west side of the Cooley?
As part of this, we could request the public, that the sidewalk become a public sidewalk or a public access easement for the sidewalk on the east side of Bethesda. That could be an option, but none that we're being looked at right now, because as this is the, with the private development, we were not looking at providing anything.
Could it be a trade-off that you give up one and create another one, so we continue to have public access to the north?
Yeah, that could, that could be part of this request, as part of that motion, you could, this could be done as part of that.
Well, this is the second, this is the second.
This is final.
Final reading, so it doesn't give us much leeway. Either vote it up or down, or amend it.
Yep. Or it could be tabled and have us work with them on that. Up to this point, that was not something that the Townhome Association was interested in at that time. We had spoken to them about that. That was not their preference. They wanted to keep it private.
Maybe, Mr. Goskin, but we can change the ordinance up till it's final approval, so we could change the ordinance tonight, just, you know, it would be kind of late in the game. Is that a fair assessment?
It's a fair assessment. Tonight's the final reading, and if you're gonna do something along those lines and consider it to, you'd probably want to do a motion to postpone, to consider what Mr. Veen is speaking about.
Okay. Just one second, I got President Sandy, and then we'll go back to, back in the order, so everyone gets a chance. Okay.
I just have one question, because the citizens stated that there is no use of the path because they have a private property sign on it, so whose property is it? Is it their private property, or is it ours as the city?
Well, it's their property with city access allowed, with public access allowed. So they do retain ownership, but there is an easement for the public on it. And I do believe it is signed for private.
And we pay as a city to maintain this whole Cooley system as taxpayers, correct?
I do not believe that we're maintaining that bike path currently.
I, I said the Cooley.
Oh, the Cooley, yes.
Yeah, so, okay, okay.
And we would, we would retain that. We'd still be able to do that.
Yeah, but, but people who pay the taxes wouldn't get to go walk down by the Cooley who are actually paying for it. I mean, I'm not saying they don't, unless maybe they have, do they have any kind of specials that, you know, help pay for any kind of maintenance on the Cooley or on the bike path?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
President Sandy, then we'll get to you, Ms. Lunskey.
To the best of my knowledge, individual property owners have to maintain the Cooley in their backyard. I know that because I have two different places on the Cooley, and not one city person has helped me maintain any of that property. I would like to point out that this is the path to nowhere, Mr. Veen. There is no plan to extend that path farther to the north, and to the contrary to, to some people's belief, Mike Op has publicly stated, which is why at Planning and Zoning, this failed five to one, he's not interested in putting that bike path through his new development. And there's another property between this property and, and Mr. Op's new development, and that nice person works at U N D, and she's sick and tired of people trespassing on her property, and she's not interested in, in putting in the bike path either. I think if you look, the, again, as Mr. Brooks pointed out, that is a private road, and so pushing people through between, between homes onto additional private property absolutely makes no sense. There is a bike path today that runs down 24th Avenue South. There is a bike path today that runs down 24th Avenue South, and it connects out to the bike path at 42nd, going north and south. There already is a path for access to the north. This, this bike, this path, the shared-use path, has been there for, for many years, a couple decades now. It hasn't been maintained by the city. You asked why it looks like it's being accessed. The folks that do the grass in there, I've talked to them, they, they roll their trucks in there and run their lawnmowers down that path to make it easier access to the backyards, because it's hard to get between, between the condos, and unless they want to access it from the north and go on private property, it's just easier for them to get in, to get in from the, from the south that way. Ultimately, I think these bike paths, when we create easements for bike paths like these, I think the mayor, and Todd and I were talking about this earlier, they need to go in when the easement is created. We can't continue to wait 20 years and then expect people to be okay with us corkscrewing a bike path into their backyard. In my opinion, we should vacate all of the paths, path connections from 38th Street to the Cooley, because those people are going to be in here asking for the same vacation when the city comes knocking. I can guarantee it, those homes have been there for 30 years. Nobody has the expectation that a bike path's going to go in. It should have been done originally when we plotted it. Not, not only that, but to Mr. Brooks' point about how there will be sidewalks in the new development, those sidewalks are going to be four feet wide, they're not shared-use paths. So even if we keep this, and somehow the gal that owns the private property says we can go across her lawn, by the time this goes in, the sidewalks are already going to be in the new Burkholz development, and they're not wide enough to be considered a bike path. So again, this is a path that goes nowhere. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy and Ms. Lunskey.
I was just going to ask if those are sidewalks on the other side of the street, Bethesda?
Oh, here?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are sidewalks there.
Wow, that's clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Osowski?
Just to clarify, so we do not pay for any mowing down there or anything? We're not, we don't pay for anything down there? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Veen, another comment, please.
To respond, Ms. Sandy, I would probably agree with everything that he said. I just wanted to make sure that we have a public access along to go north, and if we can use the access, the sidewalk that exists there, whether it's four-foot, I don't care, it's a shared-use path, I'm not concerned about it, it's just the pedestrian access that could, could go north. And I do agree with one at 20th, if you, you don't, something there mid, mid dimension, whatever that quarter mile or half mile is, would be great, but that would be coming up as a part of a future plat.
Correct.
And so, we don't have to worry about that now. So what, my only question then, is there any way we can assure we have public access on either side of Bethesda all the way up?
We already do on 42nd.
Sure, all the way over to 42nd.
We al, yes, 42nd, when the bike path is already in, the shared-use path, it's already there.
On the west side.
On the west side.
Not, not on the east side.
Not on the east side, no.
All right, any further comments? We have a motion in second on the floor. All right, seeing no further comments. Marine, why don't you go regular order, and then we'll switch and do backwards order later.
Okay. Weigel?
Yes.
Osowski?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Lunskey?
Yes.
Pridals?
Yes.
Veen?
Yeah.
And President Sandy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, Nancy, thank you. All right, we will move on to item four, citizen comments.
I have two this evening. Kimberly Fornes-Wilson.
All right. All right, so we're just going to step up to this one, and we've got our new timer, three minutes, 180 seconds is all yours.
Okay, I'll try to do my best. I apologize, I forgot my notes. Thank you so much for giving opportunity for the community to speak, Mayor and Council. My name is Kimberly Fornes-Wilson, I'm the Executive Director of Arts for Vets, and I'm here to speak basically about the funding cut and how it impacted the community that's out there doing a lot of amazing things. We are also, as a community of art groups, are compiling a database so that you can see that not only do we do great things you can partake in the community, but we also contribute millions of dollars of volunteer time every year. And that's something I'm really hoping in our relationship with the city that we get better at looking at what volunteering means to a community. I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of a hard time with the lights. If I blank, I have seizures, so if I go, it's just a little buzz, I'll come back. But anyway, so when we look at when we have nonprofit organizations, none of them can exist without volunteers. And what volunteering means, it's a love of your community, basically. A lot of times, volunteers go unseen, because most people just do it because they love it, and so they're not getting that same kind of interaction as if you're paying somebody, hiring them, looking at their job. But in the case of Arts for Vets, I also want to make note that when we saw the zeros go down, that was like, ugh, that was hard to see, because not so much that it's the amount of money, but it's about the relationship, that if you are a line item in the budget, you're seen, that the conversations are had, that you step up, you know, to the podium and share where you're at. So I was so grateful when the mayor came and saw us literally walk through the building, and I hope other people do, because what that represents is a large portion of the community that perhaps you don't get to interact with as much every day. So we have amazing artists throughout the community, and I hope that when you do a budget, that you look at the value of the contributing efforts of all of the arts organizations and human services for which we all kind of interface. Arts organizations are great problem solvers, so like at our space, we allow different human services groups to meet, and we also make accommodations for, for instance, we have a beautiful stained glass class, and so with the help of another organization, University Parks Neighborhood, we were able to adapt and get adaptive equipment so we can embrace our whole community. And nonprofits just tend to naturally look at the whole. That's what we're supposed to do, and we're supposed to fill in the holes where maybe something isn't happening that the community wants or needs. So as we go forth, I hope that you create relationships with these arts organizations, and that we look at the big picture for contributions, and please find the money to support us, because that keeps us at the table. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fornes. Thank you for hosting me last week, too.
You bet. Come back any time.
Deborah, and Deborah, I've never gotten your name right yet, sorry. Fluhoff Hasset?
Fluhoff Hasset, yes.
All right, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Wachenski, President Sandy, members of the council. I am Deborah Fluhoff Hasset, I am the Executive Director at the Empire Arts Center, I'm also a resident of Grand Forks. I live at 20 Fenton Avenue. I'm here on both behalf of myself as a citizen or a resident and as the Empire Arts Center. First, let me speak as the Empire Arts Center. I really hope that you will vote to reinstate the $159,000 for the arts funding for the city of Grand Forks. I sent most of you, I think all of you, council members, an email that shows how the economic impact is of the arts across our state. Now, we don't have those specific figures yet for Grand Forks, but I think if, when we do assemble that information, you will see that the arts do have an economic impact to our community. I'd also like to mention that as a resident here in Grand Forks, I am a transplant. I moved here in 1975. In 2010, 11, my spouse passed away, and I had the opportunity to move as having no other family here. I chose to stay in this community in part because the arts community here has been so welcoming and has been such a great part of my personal experience here in Grand Forks. And I would say that that is probably true of other people as well. Those of us who are transplants tend to group together, and I hear good things about coming to Grand Forks and finding the arts is such a great benefit for people who come from outside of the city, as well as those who have lived here all their lives. So I'm just asking if you will please consider including those monies for the arts re-grant in the future. It will help not only groups like the Arts, Empire Arts Center, but all of the arts community in this city, even those who currently aren't receiving those funds, because it's an opportunity for us to grow and to collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you. I think after 50 years, we're not going to consider you a transplant anymore. 1975 was a long time ago.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Ms. Lunskey?
Nope, that's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item five, action items, so...
5.1, introduction of ordinance, oh, sorry.
Let's hold up and just see, I know we have one, two, and three that we will pull for sure. Item seven?
10.
10. Any other items, council members? Does anyone want to pull 5.9 and make Marine read all those? No? Okay.
14.
14. I think we got everybody. Any others? All right.
One, two, and three, are we pulled off?
Yes, so right now, just so everyone's clear, I got one, two, three polled, seven, 10, and 14. All right, so we'll look for approvals on items 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, 5.8, 5.9, 5.11, 5.12, and 5.13. We got a motion, President Sandy, second, from Mr. Veen. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries unanimously. So, you got those numbers, Marine?
I do.
One, two, three, seven, 10, 14.
All right, I was anxious to get into the budget. 5.1, introduction ordinance, preliminary approval of the mayor's 2026 budget. I think I'll go to the podium just to give a quick review.
Sounds good, yeah. And I think the only other comments I would make, as the finance team did a lot of work really surrounding item on 2163, the budget in brief, but largely the rest of the budget is pretty much the same, big focus on our workforce, on infrastructure, on quality-of-life types of investments, that's the, and then, and public safety. So certainly, the big focus on this budget has its been many years in the past. And then I know, you probably don't need to go through all the funding scenarios, just answer questions, but these are obviously showing long-term how the budget will be affected as we move different parts, knowing that it's still a year-to-year budget, but you want to project long-term to make sure that you are in good shape. So with that, if there's anything you wanted to add, Marine, otherwise be ready for questions.
Yeah, maybe just a quick recap. This, I have had a couple questions about the legislative move with the 3% property tax caps, what that means per, per household versus overall, so I just wanted just to maybe go through that a little bit, because it gets a little complicated. So the 3% cap is on the valuation piece. When we talked about the value of the mill, some of it's coming from growth, some of it's coming from valuation. So we are able to take the dollar mode that comes in from growth, and we're limited to 3% on the valuation. So although we're showing an average valuation of 3.245%, that's why we have the quarter, the .25 mill reduction, which brings us within that 3%, so it's actually 2.97%. So, and that's an overall, it's not specific to every property, but the overall average, we hold that to 2.97%. So I just wanted to clear that, I've had a couple questions on that, so I just wanted to go through that. Probably the other biggest piece is that allocation change of the 1% general sales tax, that the mayor briefly spoke about this, how we have that allocation change slightly to put a little bit more money into the general fund and street capital project fund, which takes away from the economic development fund a little bit. Those scenarios for that change on the economic development is summarized in those slides. The basic thing to point out that's changed from the mayor's budget is just with, including the scenario number one includes the human needs and arts for the 2026 budget, brings in the BMX contribution, with 100,000 of that being paid back, and then also a payment back on that Greenway Downtown project. Scenario two then would be, the only difference there would be the ongoing for human needs and arts, also paying back downtown project, just over a longer term. And then scenario three is looking at, you know, what would it mean if there were additional dollars to the Children's Museum? Brings the cash low on there, so we point that out, and then, just for your information, the last two scenarios, just to sum up, would not be recommended. We don't have enough money and as fun to do that. The only difference between four and five is just what that percent increase in sales taxes assume between a 3% growth in scenario four and a 5% growth in scenario five. So I don't know if you want me to go into any more detail to recap what you heard on July 21st, otherwise, I would just open it up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ostersted. I think at this time, I'm just, yeah, I'm just going to open up to council members. Ms. Lunskey snapped first, so she gets to go first. She beat up Ms. Osowski for once, so, there you go.
Can you just tell us a little bit about what the Greenway Downtown project is?
That, I may look to Melanie to come speak to the project.
And we've got, you know, it's kind of a unique situation, so we've got that as item 5.3, but, you know, obviously, if it's not funded, it becomes a moot point, so I'm not sure how much depth you want to go in now versus 5.3, but why don't you at least give us high level?
Sure, sure. So council member Lunskey, mayor, members of the committee, the project as a whole is that 7 million, or $6.9 million project. We had shown some concept plans of that and had some input at Farmer's Market. For the most part, it is a playground area with a open field or open terraced area just kind of to the, to the south of it, near the railroad tracks. We have had some discussions about how to protect that area from flooding and ice jams, et cetera, so we were looking at the possibility of some piers maybe down by the lower river bank that could be utilized as like swings or zip line connection pieces, but that was the piece of the overall master plan. That was kind of that $40 million project that we had talked about, which included the pedestrian bridge improvements and changes to Town Square as well, but that general piece of phase one is just the downtown area, just on the other side of the, our, it includes the connection to Town Square, as well as that area near the obelisk as well.
So can I ruin the surprise that maybe you were going to say at 5.3, but there's a chance you can apply for a grant for this funding?
We had talked about that at, I think, the last meeting, committee meeting, but there is funding throughout the state that we could potentially apply for, and it could be a local, it could be part of our local share. We're always going to continue to look at those opportunities, we just don't have anything secure at this, at this moment for that.
Currently, there is a grant, we do have a grant for half of the funding, so we do have 3.4, so we have to have a match. So right now, we do have the...
There, they think they can get a grant for the match.
Parts of it, that would be great. I know they'll keep working.
There is funding throughout the state. Kim's been working on that a little bit more closely, I think that's through the Department of Economic Development. Did I get that right? Anyway, so there's a grant that we're looking at, I don't know if it's for the full 3.5 million, but we're always looking at opportunities to lower our local share, absolutely.
Anything further, Ms. Lunskey? All right, anything other budget-related, or, I guess we'll move... Any other comments? President Sandy, we'll get to it again.
Ms. Lunskey, it's unfortunate that that grant that the city's applying for, the Children's Museum is also applying for it, so it becomes a competitive process where...
She's not listening.
She's not listening, that's okay. The grant you're talking about, the Children's Museum is also applying for it, so the city of Grand Forks is competing with them, trying to get those funds. So if we win, likely they'll lose, which is unfortunate, but that's the way these things work sometimes. Mayor, the, as you were mentioning, that if things aren't budgeted today, they don't move forward. Although I agree, generally speaking, our economic development funds, we can change anytime we want to, right? So, so I'm, I'm in a support of moving this forward. I'm mostly concerned about the general fund, funding the police fire, I'm worried about our enterprise funds, the things that, I mean, these are really shiny and fun, and we often spend most of our time talking about the fund things, which is great, but the nuts and bolts of the city is done by the people working at the water treatment plant and managing the wastewater facility, the folks that get out and collect the grass clipping dump sites, the folks that, I'll give the park district some, the people that get out and cut down the trees and pick up the branches when they're blown down... get out and cut down the trees and pick up the branches when they're blown down in the wind. And certainly, of course, I mentioned police fire, but the folks, the good folks here in City Hall that show up and bring the interns and show up every day, raising their hands, volunteering to do the hard work that our community really needs. And so I'm ready to, to support your baseline budget. I, I'm going to give a lot of kudos to the BMX folks. It's hard, raising money. They've obviously dedicated a lot of their own time and money and hard work getting the facility. Granted, we helped them with some land, but they also did a significant amount of fundraising to get the track done, bringing a private track builder to make that happen, and volunteering to repay some of the, some of the money that, that they would need. I think that that's really important, and it shows how they're, how well they're working. I'm, I'm still lukewarm on the Downtown Greenway project. I like it. I think it would be fun. It's phase one of $7 million of, I don't know, probably we'll never get that pedestrian bridge in, so take away whatever that is, $10 million. This is probably still a $30 million project, which would be great if we could figure out how to fund it. I'm all for doing it. I think because scenario one has the repayment of the, of the, the dollars for our flood protection, I do, again, I'm leery on it because we can't tie the hands of the future councils. And so we, if we support this today and we spend the money, somebody tomorrow might say, nah, let's not pay that back. Let's use those economic development funds for the next cool shiny thing, right? So however, I think in the spirit of moving the budget process forward and knowing that we need some sort of direction, I think scenario one I can support tonight, and then we'll do the heavy lifting on the budget when we come back here and talk about the nuts and bolts. And then certainly in the meantime, as I'm sure the rest of the council members, I'll spend some time going through all the line items of the budget book. I'm not going to wait until the next hearing to get those questions answered. I will send them to Ms. Thorstedt and likewise yourself, and copy, or you can copy the council members back when, when we have those answers. So I think, all things considered, a pretty good budget we've laid out here. Lots of, lots of things for everyone. I, I do feel it's important to point out that for the arts funding, and I'm a big supporter of the arts in our community, the, the purpose for that funding was not for operations. It never was. I don't know how it evolved into being used for operations. And so for all of the arts organizations in our community, you shouldn't be using it for operations. You got to figure out a way to, whatever you're using it for, you need to find sustainable funding for it, because we don't know, just like this year, we don't know when we'll have the funds to keep funding it. If something catastrophic happens and we can't fund it, and you're using it for operations, you have bigger problems. So I would highly encourage the folks in the arts community to not be using these funds for operations. Use them for fun, new, special things, and, and then figure out how to financially sustain them as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Sandy. Was there a motion in there, or was that comments for the beginning?
Could I add before we make a motion?
Okay.
So I went through it pretty quickly, but what we looked at tonight, and President Sandy, you're correct, once you approve tonight, you can only go down, you can't go up. So if there's something you want included, to be brought to the public hearing, included in there tonight. So what we look for tonight is preliminary approval and introduction of the ordinance, and then you're also setting the public hearing, which would be set for September 15th here in council chambers at 5:30. So that's part of your motion. I'd also like part of that motion to incorporate the 911 dispatchers, as they are now eligible for the Andy Purse Public Safety Penchant Plan. So we would need that included as part of the motion.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Knowing that the budget can only go down from this point, and there's further discussions on all of 2163 and others, I'm going to take Ms. Thorstedt's recommended, recommended motion to include alternative scenario three.
Was it three or one?
Three. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for alternative scenario three. Do we have a second on that, and then we can further discussion?
All second, just for, go to the order.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, let's, well, first, just wanted to mention, this is just a President Sandy's comments, appreciate that. I think the, was that what you meant?
Actually, Mayor, my apologies, that isn't what I meant.
Okay.
So let me, let me rephrase. Um, yeah.
This would be one.
Yeah, thank you. I was, yep, scenario one. Thank you, Mayor. My apologies, my apologies, everyone.
Okay. Were you okay with changing that to scenario one from scenario three as part of your motion as well?
I guess.
All right. All right, we do, so we have a motion, a second, for including the 911 dispatcher as part of the public safety fan, and then incorporating scenario one, which does include the human needs and arts funding for another year, as well as the items listed on there and the changes. Just to, I wanted to mention one thing to President Sandy, and I think some of these funds do get the focus, but I want to thank finance. I mean, 95% of your time is general fund, enterprise fund-related things, and I'm glad we don't have moments like other entities might have, where you have to wheel everyone out in each department. All that work takes place before we get to this point, and our department has to do a great job of cutting where they can and do more with less. Every day they do more with less, our employees do more with less. We had a meeting with the employee group, and they even mentioned that, you keep asking us to do more with less. And I said, I'm only asking you to do the same thing that I'm willing to do myself. But as we continue to grow, you know, we need to fund the general fund items. That is the core of our business. That is crucially important in enterprise funds, obviously with water, wastewater, another crucially important thing. So just wanted to comment on that and just give a thank you to all the staff and to finance, in particular, department heads and everybody. So thank you for that. All right, now we'll open up for comments. We do have a motion, a second, as that was. Mr. Veen.
Just very briefly, what we're approving is a budget that has the 2.97% increase that we, you talked about, right?
That's correct.
And the line items within there, we still have the ability to move around when we do the final.
As long as the, the increase, as long as nothing is increased from that.
But I mean, if we pass this one, and even if we don't like every detail of it, we can work out the details at the final reading.
Yeah, and as soon as you, if there's things that you want input or comments on, the sooner you can, you know, bring those to finance, the better, rather than, you know, we do have a tight, when it gets to the second reading and the final reading for the budget, the timeline does get a lot tighter at that point, so.
Mayor Baczynski, Councilman Veen, just, I would just clarify that, as long as you're within the fund, you're not increasing the budget. If you're moving from one fund to the other, that's ultimately going to be increasing a budget in one of those funds, so that would be considered an increase. So as long as you're within the line items within a fund, you're good.
In each line item?
Within each fund. So general fund within all departments, you're good, but if you're wanting to move money from another fund into the general fund, that would be seen as an increase. I also just want to point out, you know, part of this, and this, I did my best to summarize in the staff report everything involved with this budget, but part of, we've already talked about those three police officers that's contingent on getting the, the grant that would be phased in funding like the previous grant over four years. We do also, and we'll attach this with final approval, we do have that cost share change from the 80/20 to the 70/30 that's also incorporated in here. But with that, we can go through any of your questions between now and the public hearing as well.
All right. Mr. Veen, Madam Osowski, please.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions because it is just the preliminary, but I guess, Mr. Mayor, I really liked your baseline that you initially had, and, you know, it talks about adding in the human services. You know, we still, we still manage the CBGD funds, which are available to those types of organizations. As for art funding, Visit Grand Forks has a $1.4 million budget in 2026, and I think that that would be a great place where if these art, if the arts community needs some extra support for, you know, their events, then they should go really through our events committee. I, I really don't understand why we're funding those things separately at all, and with a budget of $1.4 million, you think, you know, like the one lady said, it's not about the amount of money, it's they just want to be seen and heard. And so I guess, I feel that we have enough money set, like in other situations, to fund both the human needs and the art fundings, and we don't need to be pulling from here. I don't agree with the BMX at all with us funding it. I, I'm personally sick of funding people's hobbies, and I disagree with borrowing from flood protection 100% to build the Greenway project. You know, no one's even talked about operations on that or anything. I, I mean, as for the mayor's baseline budget, there are some other things that I really have a lot of concerns about that I would like to go into more detail about as we move forward, but just even the specials going from 80 to 70%, I mean, I disagree with that. I think that our 80/20 split is very nice, and, you know, people pay a lot of taxes already, and then to put specials on them like that. You know, we still haven't talked about giving mills back to the airport, and I believe that they have a runway project coming up. And so is that anywhere within our budget on how we're going to help support that?
Mayor Baczynski, Councilperson Osowski, so the airport, so we are limited to 3% property tax cap, and that would be part of that. So if you were to increase two mills for the airport, it's under the city's umbrella, so we'd have to have that plus additional cuts in another area within the city property tax. So we will be going forward, limited to that 3% cap.
If we add back in the airport?
Currently, as we are now. So currently, we have two mills that go to the airport before the 2025 budget that was at four mills. But we would not be able to now increase two mills.
Right. I don't know, I, I'm kind of concerned, I mean, we can talk about this later, also the Beacon project. I, I have a lot of concerns about that. It's my understanding that, you know, pilots aren't transferable, so whatever agreement we got in with the original developer, we have still not seen the new developer come up. And so are we, Mr. Goss said, are we still under legal obligation to continue to use their, because they are paying us property taxes so we can build and develop the center? Are we still obligated to use their property taxes for that?
Well, the way the Beacon agreement, we still, the agreement's still in existence, and as I understand it, the 80% of the property taxes have been, or excuse me, property taxes have been paid, and 80% of those property tax revenues have been paid over to the city in anticipation of a bonding for the improvement of the public space there. If there was, happened to be a change with respect to that particular development as another tax incentive, we'd have to take a look at, because I understand those, those funds are sitting in an account with the city at this point, and, and whether, you know, to repay those, to allocate those back to the taxing entities that have been received. So the taxes have been paid on those buildings. It's just the allocation of where those revenues have been, have been paid out over the last couple of years.
I guess my question is, is if pilots are not transferable, and the original developer is no longer in the picture, then who are we in an agreement with?
We have an agreement with several entities. In fact, I just looked at it today. There are entities that, that own the parcels that involve the public space. There is Epic Management. I just looked at it today, there's about four or five different entities that we currently have an agreement with, and we're looking at that. And you got to be mindful, the agreement that exists is a tax increment financing agreement with a bonding feature to it, and it, that is different than a payment in lieu of tax agreement that you've seen in, in the recent past.
Okay. And then, you know, some other things I noticed, I know Marine pointed out it wasn't very much money for person, but, you know, our flood protection costs are still going up. What are they, from 3% to 5%? Or is it 2% to 5%? I think it's 2% to 5%, isn't it?
So in the Councilman Person Osowski, so if you're referring to the flood protection Greenway maintenance fee that's in our stormwater fund, that is a 5% increase. What that means is it goes from $1.61 a month to $1.69.
Okay.
That takes care of ongoing, the annual operation needs of the flood protection system in Greenway. That's where that fee goes. The larger capital project...
What was that again?
Pardon me?
Was that Fund 5400?
Correct.
Okay.
And there's 11%, which is a 45 cent increase a month for storm pond, storm around the entire city, and then there's the 5% is directly related to operations of the flood protection Greenway system.
What's the stormwater? Is that 4154?
Stormwater is also 5400. So these two are both housed within 5400. Think of 5400 as the stormwater, that handles the operational portion of the flood protection Greenway. The capital project fund, 4154, handles capital projects related to the flooding.
For the larger, for the larger projects, right? I, so where's the 11% going?
That's for your general stormwater needs across the city, so ponds and storm needs across, so that fee is a 40, that 11% sounds high, but it comes to 45 cents a month on a, on a whole.
Okay. I, I guess I have a hard time just even voting for most of this stuff with the raises. I mean, our utilities are going up, everything is, we're basically raising taxes to the max amount at our 2.9, 2.97%. And so I, I disagree with, I would have more agreed with the mayor's baseline budget, but I don't fully agree with that either. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions for this evening? Ms. Berg, did you have one?
Yes, I, there has been a lot of work, but it's been a great baseline budget. I would prefer to fund the ECI higher, but I do understand the constraints that we're under. I think best practice would look to maintain that 75 to 100% for the employees of the city. I appreciate the support that the community has provided for the arts and human needs funds and the comments and action that people have taken. There's been a lot of comments on, that I've received to support scenario two, which is exactly like scenario one, just continuing on in further years. However, we can't really promise that because the budget is year-to-year, and so we can't promise that scenario two would happen next year. And so I appreciate President Sandy's comments on looking to self-fund because we never know what will happen, although I am in support of, of the arts and human needs. I do plan to support that, but we have to be cautionary. I would also consider President Sandy's comments on not wanting to strap the future councils' hands with the Greenway project, and I would want us to maybe consider having half of that moved back to the flood protection that Mayor had originally proposed, and maybe keeping that other half with the EDC fund.
Thank you. And I think that we have that in two separate years, so you could, you know, if you were to do something like that, you could do one in '26 and one in '27, or vice versa.
So Mayor Baczynski, Councilman Person Berg, so the Greenway project is budgeted over two years, 1.7 million a year and some change. So this, like you said, you can't bind future councils, so this will be looked at every year. It could be where sales tax comes in better than projected, and we could pay that back sooner, or, you know, use for a different purpose. But we will bring this forward every year to reanalyze how these funds are used.
Ms. Lunskey, please.
So if we vote on scenario one, then do we still vote on 5.2 and 5.3? Or is that all one of them?
This would be separate from that.
Yeah, I guess, my point was if you're not going to vote to fund them, that doesn't make as much sense to vote to do them, but you, still, they have to be voted on. You're just, you're doing the authorization first and then the appropriation, or vice versa. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Mr. Veen, please.
Yeah, if you could help me, the hu-
If you could help me, the human, under Scenario 1, the human needs and arts is one year. And under some of the other ones, it's continual. Could you explain that? Because they'll, we all have to do Year 1 regardless, right?
So the only difference between Scenarios 1 and Scenario 2 is if it's council's priority to continue. The difference would be if it's council's priority to basically earmark funds ongoing for human needs and arts re-granting, you'd look at Scenario 2. The other difference to be able to do that, we have the repayment back on the Greenway project over a longer term. So it's over 30-year payback versus this is over 20-year payback. So that's your difference between 1 and 2.
The 30-year versus the 20-year payback is really what that means.
And to do, and when I look at Fund 4154 and the flood protection Greenway, large capital project needs, that does fit where a 30-year would be doable.
What happened, I know in the original, special events was taken out.
That is correct. Part of the mayor's baseline was the removal of the special events money, which was the same dollar amount. These scenarios do not bring that back in.
Yeah. And how much was that?
The same amount, 159, 135.
159. So the special events is not getting that, we're not able to use that toward funding the work?
We, Mayor Baczynski, Councilwoman Veen, we do not have the events money coming back in. The Visit Greater Grand Forks do have their own funds. So that portion of the program would still continue for events to bring in tourism. But the, this city portion would not be included in here of the 159.
And do we have any idea what impact that's going to be? Because we had that this year, now none for the following year. And I think the work they do for Grand Forks in promoting events and helping is phenomenal.
I can speak to that a little bit. We've had, you know, long conversations with Julie Rigg. Fortunately, the economy's done well. We're getting a lot more in the lodging tax that's going in there. So their, their revenues have grown. Would they like to keep it? I think in some scenarios, yes. But they also, you know, separate how decisions are being made. So they're not coming in front of the council then when they decide how they're going to fund different things. So I think there's some benefit on their end is to separate from whether the city's sending the funding there or not. So that 3% lodging has grown. So I think they're comfortable being able to serve their mission from that without needing the additional funds that the city's putting in. So.
And you feel pretty comfortable they're okay with this?
Yeah, I, I think, well, they, they're obviously not here. And they've also, you know, in our conversations, many months of speaking on that, they have a comfort level on that.
In the redistribution of the funds from 2163, this, is this the first time we've done that where we redistributed those percentages?
Councilman Veen, we did change the allocation, I want to say about five years back. We, by, I believe the general fund previously was 49 and 1/2%.
Right.
And so it was between the general fund and economic development fund. Infrastructure has been at 30% as long as I can remember. So it's the first change on that. And that's really due to, we're projecting less revenue going in for our needed infrastructure for streets. So that's why it was the combined additional dollars from here to help make up some of that gap. And then that cost share policy is also part of the solution.
And Mayor, the last, the last issue I had was on the BMX. We're requesting that they pay $100,000 back. That really doesn't, there's, I mean, anything could happen in the next 10 years. And so I think, I have probably a concern about having them pay back anything, to be honest with you. If we do do it, it's not going to impact this budget anyway. It's that 650,000 that's being projected here. But we could have more discussion on that between now and the final.
I think that was one of the items that was brought up, because you had mentioned having some skin in the game. So I think they'd be probably happy to hear that now, that that's changed a bit.
No, it didn't change a bit, because I wanted them to use it as match money, not pay us back. I think there's a big difference there to put that out as an incentive to go raise some funds as a match. The 100,000, I don't really want to go after them to try to repay. It's hard to do. So, anyway, I think we can work that out.
All right. Any further comments for this evening on item 5.1? President Sandy, please.
Sorry, one last comment. I just want to, I want people to understand why I'm not excited about using Fund 4154 for this, for the park. The, the special assessment for the capital maintenance of our flood protection system has limited funds. Unlike our sales tax that goes on forever, or property taxes that we collect forever, once we've collected all of the special assessments for all the people that reside within our flood protection, that's all the money we have coming in for our flood protection maintenance. And so the more of that we can stockpile and earn interest on and save for later, the better off we're going to be, and the less chance that we're going to have to go back to the citizens and ask them, kind of like using capital maintenance dollars to redo suites and put in escalators at the Alaris Center, which it wasn't intended for in the first place, which is why the Alaris Center ended up having financial, financially having a problem with future, with future capital maintenance. It's the exact same concept. And so I'm willing to go along tonight and support this so that we have it in the budget. But I, I'm not concerned about Ms. Berg, or Mayor you, or Mr. Veen, or Mr. Friedhofs. I'm not concerned about any of us today. I'm worried about three years from now, or five years from now, when there's entirely different council here, and somebody says, I really want another shiny object. That's, that's, so I just want to be clear about that. I'm, I'm not concerned about us. I'm not worried. I believe that we all have the best of intentions. I'm worried about future intentions. Thank you, Mayor.
I think the only thing I'd add to that one, and this was news to me, I had to work through this with Maureen, but 4154 is also funded by a use tax. So that brings in about one, is it 1.3 million a year?
It's roughly 1.3 million a year.
So if you want to explain that, so there is ongoing funding that goes in there on top of the specials. So.
That's news to me.
Yeah. So let, let you let Maureen, yeah. So as far as you're talking about a tax and growing that, it's another, go ahead, Ms. Starsted.
Mayor Baczynski, President Sandy, members of council. So part of the funding plan years ago, they were trying to think ahead. So not only special assess, special assessments on newly annexed property goes to pay for future capital maintenance needs of the flood protection Greenway system. Also, there's a use tax, and that brings in roughly about 1.3 million a year that comes in, and there's no sunset on that currently. So where that comes from is say you order something, or you go to Fargo to purchase something at, at a retail store there, but it's being delivered at your home. You're going to pay at the rate of Grand Forks sales tax. And that's what's estimated by formula that comes in as a use tax. So that roughly brings in about 1.3 million a year. So that's an ongoing source.
It's the first time in five years.
So, there you go.
All right. Well, I think it's, it wouldn't change, I guess, for, for tonight's sake, whether it's coming from 4154 or 2163 or reimbursed, it would be the same overall amount. So that wouldn't change whether, you know, we can have that discussion later. Okay. Ms. Berg?
I thought Maureen indicated that each line item, we couldn't increase.
Is it overall, or would it be each?
You can, so as long as you're within a fund, you can move between line items. But you just can't increase any certain fund after tonight.
Okay. So since it was being paid back, it's still within that fund, I think, would that be a fair way to say it for 4154? Or how would you like to have that tonight, giving some flexibility?
You know, I, I believe maybe the best way to handle it is if you reverse course, you know, tonight, it's probably best then to, to have it in here as the transfer between, because that's going to be the highest. If you take it away, you're lowering the budget. So.
Okay. So since it's a transfer, yearly transfer, that one year, you're, you're actually raising the budget by transferring it from there, even though it's just on paper?
And then just so you know, any budget, because you see these come forward quite often, we can always amend in the year if a decision of council is to amend the budget. So that's another option.
Does that help give you a clear mind?
Yes, yes. That's helpful. And then, Mr. Veen, you, you brought up, I didn't catch it, 20 years versus the 30 years. So there is a difference between Scenario 1 and Scenario 2 that I didn't catch. And so I would prefer to do Scenario 2, to plan, maybe not necessarily as high, but to continue to support our community as needed in the future.
Any further comments? We do got a motion to second. We should move on that and/or amend it. Leave it up to council. If there's nothing further, I'm going to call for roll call vote on the motion on the floor. All right, Ms. Starsted, if you want to call it. Let's go reverse order this now, just to mix it up. And then later, maybe we go middle out. I don't know.
Okay. Councilmember Veen?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandy?
Yes.
Friedhofs?
Yes.
Lunskey?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Osowski?
No.
Weigel?
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 1. Osowski dissenting. Thank you.
And Mike was just pointing out that the repayment doesn't start to 2027. So it's not part of the 2026 budget affecting numbers. So we're good.
Was that Mike, or was it the intern that caught that? I want to know. Pretty sure it was the intern, yep.
All right. Moving on to 5.2, Red River BMX update.
Thank you, Mr.
I think, I think we just want to have an action item on the, the funding for the BMX, to the BMX Hubo's Raceway.
Okay. I'll move approval, Mayor.
Got a motion approved. President Sandy second for Mr. Friedhofs. Any further discussion on item 5.2? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 1 with Osowski dissenting.
5.3, grant funding agreement between North Dakota Parks and Rec Department with City of Grand Forks for the downtown Gateway and Greenway Project Phase 1.
All right. Thank you. I know we have people online as well. So I guess it's up to council how they want to proceed with this. If they want a presentation, if they want comments, questions, or, or a vote. Yeah, that's fine. Well, someone needs to move, motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Ms. Berg. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Friedhofs. Any further discussion? All right. Let's go, let's start with Lunskey and work our way through. How's that sound?
Sounds good.
Sorry, first.
All right. This is on 5.3. Lunskey?
Yes.
Friedhofs?
Yes.
President Sandy?
Yes, thank you.
Veen?
Yes.
Weigel?
Yes.
Osowski?
No.
And Berg?
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 1 with Osowski dissenting. And thank, thank you for the people that attended online. You were off the hot seat, I suppose. So you can hang up, or you can keep watching if you want to. Feel free.
Maybe while they're still on, Mayor. Thanks to our state officials and regarding the grant. It is a federal grant, but we should, we owe them a big thank. It was a competitive grant. Thanks to the staff that applied. And, you know, while we were winners on this, and there weren't a lot of winners in this category. So thanks to everyone.
All right. Moving on to 5.7, application from the Children's Museum for site authorization at Ramus Guys, 312 Kitten Avenue, South.
All right. Thank you. Please.
I want to move approval, but I have a comment regarding the discussion we had last week about it. But I move approval with.
Let me go back if I get a second, then I'll let you have the comment. So we got a second from, what? Motion for Osowski, second from Weigel. Comment time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess last week, we had a big discussion on maybe putting a cap on how many locations some of these charitable gamings could have. And I have to say that I changed my mind, and I was proven wrong. I think most of it goes to this wonderful letter that DHI has sent me multiple times. I, I mean, to me, the charitable gaming is supposed to be like help with operations and things like that. They shouldn't be making a bunch of money off of our community, especially when other organizations and other nonprofits want to get in there and, and help support themselves. But, you know, and, I mean, I think it's great that they have money to help out others. But to me, that's not the purpose of the charitable gaming. They gave $1 million to the Children's Museum. They gave $50,000 to the Career Impact, and $325,000, you know, back to the community through grants. And I, I think all of that stuff is really great. But if they are making that much money off of charitable gaming, I, I think it would be really nice to get some other entities, maybe the BMX track, maybe some of the arts people, you know, the Children's Museum could expand on their charitable gaming also, and maybe, but I, I am all in favor of putting a cap on those locations. And we can discuss that at a different time. I know that's not really the agenda item. But I, I don't agree with the comments I made last week. And I'm going to have to say that I changed my mind after looking into it a little bit more. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. All right. Any further comments? Got a motion to second on item 5.7. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
5.10, Public Transportation Director Employment Agreement.
All right. I don't know if someone had a comment.
I move approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Berg. I think that was just a farewell to you, Dale. She wanted to.
Yeah, with a comment.
Give a nod. Is there a comment? Okay.
I didn't pull this item, Mr. Veen did. And I do know why. Yeah, he's ready to vote.
All right. Sounds good.
But Dale, I know initially, when we first met, that I came down on you a little bit hard. But I have to say that you do a great job. So, but, yeah.
All right. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries 6 to 1 with Veen dissenting.
And 5.14, Safe Streets for All Comprehensive Safety Action Plan.
Mr. Mayor, there were a couple items I, last week, as you recall, well, you might not recall because you weren't here. But everybody else may recall that I had a laundry list of things that I didn't think should be part of the plan. After further discussions with Mr. Krinko and Mr. Weber, we decided that any, any future developments as part of the Safe Streets for All would have to come back to council for approval. And, and I'm still perfectly fine with that. However, I think under no circumstance should we be taking out parking to put a bike path down University Avenue. And so I, I don't know how other people feel about that. But I just, it's one of those things that I, I'm not sleeping at night knowing that we may as well rip the Band-Aid off today and, and just say it. Because city staff at some point, when they come back, they'll have to come and ask for it anyway. They might want it. They'll have to come and ask for it. I don't want it being in some plan in 25 years, people saying, look, the plan says we're going to do this. So I'd rather have it removed. Additionally, the write-ins and write-outs on South Washington. I think that we should concentrate on the plan that we've already developed. The consultants already did a plan that said we should start working and having those businesses on South Washington use ingress and egress off the side streets. I think we should continue to push for that, and removal of, of the front-facing driveways. But going to a write-in, write-out, I think is, is, it's, I think we're asking for a whole bunch of people to show up at meetings in the future being angry about some plan, again, that we talked about years before. So I would prefer to see those two items move, removed from the study. If I'm outvoted, no problem. So I will move approval with those two exceptions. Mr. Mayor?
I second.
Got a motion and a quick second. Motion for President Sandy, second for Ms. Osowski. Comment period. Ms. Berg, please.
Mr. Weber, do you have feedback on those items that, and help give us some education on that?
Yeah, of course. Thank you for having me this evening.
There we go. Can you hear me now? Sorry about that. Thank you for having me this evening. I, the two concepts are simply that. They're concepts that are meant to demonstrate the safety implementation strategies. And so to the Washington Street example, it's a really perfect example of something that I think is. that I think is demonstrating safety features, right? When you're removing those left lane turns and those left lane movements, you're reducing a lot of those conflict points. It's one of those things, to Mr. Sandy's point, it's going to be really important for city engineering to be bringing these concepts up. And so, they're simply concepts inside of that safety action plan. They're not going to be the things that you're going to be taking and immediately applying for right away, because those need to go through the process of design and things like that. And so, they're meant to just demonstrate some of those implementation strategies. With that, it's one of the features that made this safety action plan stand out a little bit different compared to some of the ones that are regionally done, that did not have some of those examples and those layouts. And so, if that's the will of council, that's completely understandable. It was more just to show how those safety implementations would be implemented within the community.
Any further questions, Mr. Veen?
Am I right in saying there are technical recommendations that, of how we should go forward, or they actually aren't in there right now? I, I just want to understand, this is a technical report, but we're adding political pieces to a technical report. Is that right?
It's a technical safety action plan. And so, it's more that it's intended to open up that pot of cash that's basically part of the federal highway. And so, these concepts are simply to demonstrate what those implementation strategies look like. And so, some of the ones that I think are good examples are, are elements that you're going to be able to take from past studies and implement, and then also elements that really are intended to increase the safety for all users. And so, they're simply just.
So, how do you take something out of a technical report?
Well, these are just the layouts that are part of the appendix. They are not the actual dedicated layouts for a project. These aren't technical layouts.
So, you could just put an X to them?
I would be removing them from the appendix as part of that vote.
Any further comment? Mr. Weigel, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree with what President Sandy said. Obviously, university's growing. There's more and more people living in and around that area, and parking, I think, is important for that area. But we heard from Mr. Weber. Just curious what your thoughts are on some of those suggestions, Mr. Krinko.
Regarding University Avenue and the bike lanes, I know a number of years back, I ended up looking into that in a little bit more detail, including going out there in the middle of winter, putting down some spray paint as to where those hypothetical bike lanes would have been. And one of the main concerns with that was the vehicles parking because of snow and snow clearing. Those vehicles would end up parked in the bike lane itself, which could effectively remove on-street parking as a result of that. So, that was a concern that was brought at that time. I know that, and that eventually ended up resulting in the reason why we ended up going with the sharrows instead of a bike lane on University. It's been brought up before in the past as part of the MPO's Bike Ped Plan. There was a public input meeting where direct mailers were sent out regarding that project. And there were comments from the public on both sides. There was a desire for the bike lanes. There was also a desire to keep parking, keep the trees. So, there was some back and forth in there as well. In regards to Washington, I will be honest, I think council is absolutely correct in that we would probably see a fairly large turnout if we decided to put a median down Washington and exclude left turns from being taken from Washington or off of any of those driveway accesses. So, I think referring to the 2011 study that was done by the MPO, showing a number of closures is a good path moving forward. That's something that the North Dakota Department of Transportation is working on, on North Washington from First to Eighth, which is a future project they're working on. And I think that's a good way forward on the South Side as well.
All right. We do have a motion in a second. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
That's it for action items, so if you want to list off the two information items we've got on there, Ms. Storsted?
6.1, Statement of Changes in Cash Balance as of June 30th, and 6.2 is your Investment Portfolio Management Summary as of June 30th.
Thank you. Item seven, Approval of Minutes and Bills.
7.1, Vendor List and Engineer's Estimates as Attached.
A motion approved, President Sandy, second from Vice President Weigel. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
7.2, Your Minutes from July 21st.
All right. We got a motion for Ms. Lunskey as is, and a second from President Sandy. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item eight, City Administrator Comments. Mr. Phelan, please.
Next week at the COW, we are intending, if we can get positive reaction from Agristo to bring the development agreement to the committee as a whole, and then we will also have the discussion on the gaming site authorization. So, that'll, that, those will be the two major items at the Monday, next Monday's COW. The other thing, I've sent you meeting invites, but there's a senior center ribbon cutting on Tuesday, August 12th at 1:30, and that's for the expansion mainly in their kitchen area. And we use CDBG funds, as you recall, I think over $1 million for that. So, any questions on that? And then also, the following day on Wednesday is the ribbon cutting for the Career Impact Academy at 1:00. So, I, that should be, also be, I have an invite on those, two items. And then, Agristo is going to be here for a community celebration on August 25th from 48 PM on that Monday, on that we have a COW. But they're hosting a Taste of Belgium. So, those are three events that are coming up that I want to make you aware, and I sent out meeting invites for all three of those events.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I wanted, oh, item nine, Mayor and Councilmember Comments. Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Phelan, for sending out those notifications. I greatly appreciate that. And Dale, I wish you the best of luck, and I hope everything goes well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berg?
No, thank you.
All right. Ms. Lunskey?
Just remind everyone to stop at Town Square on Wednesday at lunch for Wednesday buys.
Friedols, could you beat that?
I cannot, no.
All right. Mr. Sandy. All right, sorry, Mr. Veen. I looked at him and said, "Mr. Sandy." Mr. Veen, it's a long day. All right. Vice President Weigel?
Just thank you to Dale for his years of service to the City of Grand Forks. It's greatly appreciated.
President Sandy?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Bergman has never been short of entertaining the times we've worked together. There have been some good times, many, many good times, and a couple of bad times. And all in all, what a great distinguished career you've had. And thank you so much for your dedication to our community. I can't say it enough. We're very fortunate to have people like Mr. Bergman carrying the water for our, for our community, no doubt.